Hour after I did it and I got sick like throwing up and everything.
With that, my clock says six thirty and I see in the room that we have a quorum. So I'm going to call the meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First item on our agenda is our approval of consent, our consent agenda. Uh, first under that is vouchers totaling six hundred and two thousand five hundred and thirty-four dollars and sixteen cents. Did everyone receive copies of the voucher? Any questions regarding vouchers? Item two is minutes from the September five, twenty twenty-three meeting. Everyone received copies of the minutes for any questions or corrections to the minutes. All right. And finally, we have the CDBG and Heal Grant vouchers totaling twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars, fifty-one cents. Did everyone receive copies of those vouchers?
Does everybody understand that doing? We put a note on there. This is where uh, this is the, we set up a separate account for the, the heal money. Uh, and then also the CPG money. So it passes through us. We're not really approving. A function of just uh, transparency and trying to approve it to that way.
Right.
Let people know.
Any questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve our consent agenda as submitted.
Moved.
Councilman Driggers moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We're now move to our first public comment opportunity. I don't see any members of the public here in the room or in the online unless Ronald, you wanted to say something? All right, so we will uh disclose that public comment opportunity and uh we will uh skip over item D as Cara Duel is under the weather and she will not be here this evening. And we will move then straight to Mr. Mendoza. So I'm, I'm gonna allow you uh that to introduce Jerry and then we'll go from there.
So this is Jerry Mendoza. He's taking over as the new director of Parks and Recreation. I, I think we got Jerry at a good time in his life. He was kind of transitioning from his consulting business and told us that he wanted to do something fun, right? So here we are doing something fun. Um, so you know, Jerry's got a background and I, I'll invite you to kind of discuss your background.
I've got a background in.
And Jerry, before you get started, if you wouldn't mind coming stand behind the podium, that way people can, on the camera can see you and hear you a little better.
We're scoring now.
Yeah.
No, I'm Jerry Mendoza. Um, pretty much my passion is youth and youth with, with sports as a, a, a focus. Um, I grew up in, in Dallas and so the only way I got out of there was, was through sports. I got an opportunity to go to college here in in Kansas. And so I've always grown up trying to coach kids, youth um to find the right path to, 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 to go in life and to kind of mimic sports to that life, to the, to what their expectations are in life. And so throughout my many, many, many years, I've coached um over twenty-two years. And I have a nonprofit called Bottom of the Ninth, which focuses on, on creating um events, uh camps, anything that, that brings youth together to teach them sports, what albeit baseball, soccer, football, basketball, anything and everything. And I still haven't mastered golf though, so that's not, that's not. Um, but the, the purpose is to, to grow these youth through, through sports and to get them to, to maybe mim- mimic those things that they've learned in sports to, to their future life. So I'm excited to, to be a part of Hillsborough rec and I'm just, I, I can't, I can't say enough about how well I've seen it in the past, what, what people are, are doing here in this, in this community. And I'd like to be a part of that and help that, that grow if I can. Thank you very much. And I'm, I'm excited.
So. You know, uh, any questions for Jerry or comments?
Do you have any, any ideas or stuff that you want to hit on first?
Well, uh, there's, my list is constantly growing on the, that, that, that we need to work on. But I, like I, I talked to Matt and several of the, the interview count, uh, committee. I'd, I'd like to piggyback off some of the ideas that they have and grow that. And one of them is, is an after school program.
Oh, nice.
And you know, it not only sports, but if we can do it to other things like science and uh entrepreneurship with, which the school at, at Tabor, you know, we can, we can, we can work with them and build some programs like that and have, you know, maybe the next Bill Gates come through Hillsborough. Just show them at an early age what it is to, to start a company or, or build a good company uh from the ground up. So. Um, but yes, there's, there are many, 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 many programs that we can, we can be a part of.
So I guess we've got flag football coming up.
Yes, it starts uh Saturday. So um, well, I'm excited. Uh, we've got three teams representing each, each division for Hillsborough. Um, so and um, Matt is, is one of the coaches.
Yeah, oh boy. Ewi league, first and second grade.
It's so very exciting. So and then the next after that.
Other communities participating?
Uh, we've got Peabody, uh, Gospel, Kenton Galva, Marion. I believe that's, that's all.
That's awesome.
My, my kids and grandkids are through that program and, and it brings a lot of people to town.
Yes, we've got eight total teams in, in the first and second grade division. Seven in each of the third and fourth and fifth and sixth grade. So there's gonna be a lot of competition, four games every Saturday for the first three Saturdays and then three for the last two. There's gonna be enough, enough uh flag football and then Sat- you know, Sundays, the, the man football. So there you go.
The what uh school brought you to Kansas?
Uh, well, actually my wife brought me back to Kansas. We, we met in college. Uh, she's from Goddard. Uh, so it, we moved to Texas. It only took her fifteen years to convince me that we needed to move back to Kansas. So.
But did you say you went to college here?
Yes, Wichita State, uh Newman and then Wichita State. So. And uh, we moved uh to, it's actually Marion, but we, I, I say it's only uh Kansas.
Oh, yeah.
Hundred and fortieth. So. It's, I'm still getting used to the change from city life to, to country life, but I'm liking it. The, the traffic jams are a little better. It's not cars.
Well, Jerry, we're really glad to have you on the team. Looking forward to, to uh, uh, just, just a really exciting time with the, with the sports rec and parks and all that other stuff.
Excited to.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. We're gonna move on now into our business items. First item up is consideration of a proposal for, of a purchase of ballistic vests for the police department, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So uh, police department actually received six thousand dollars in donations from the community foundation to purchase new ballistic vests. Uh, ballistic vests, everybody bulletproof vest. Um, so I, I put the, the specs on there as far as what's uh, what bulletproof vest we're talking about. There's a lot of types. A lot of people don't understand that they actually expire after five years. Uh, and so what we've got here is, is a proposal to replace uh all the full-time officers and have an extra four uh rotation on the, on the part-time officers. Um, the Safe Flight Defense is, is where Jesse prefers to purchase those. Um, they, they tend to have a better fit. They've kind of tested around a bunch of different corps and these are the ones I like. Um, they, they fit a little bit better for them. Uh, the reason why you're seeing it here, it's actually only going to cost us in city funds, four thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars. But uh it crossed over the ten thousand dollar threshold, which we can approve that administratively. So uh, we're bringing it to you. So you've got six thousand dollars there from the community foundation and then the four thousand, one thirty-four. Uh, we can take from the special law enforcement fund, equipment fund, uh, which has got sixty-five thousand in it. Um, so that's what we're, we're recommending today is the approval for that purchase.
Any questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the purchase of six body armor sets for the PD from Safe Flight Defense at a cost of ten thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Also move.
Councilman Lowen moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Second item is consideration of a purchase of road asphalt from APAC at a cost not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So this is a little bit of a, kind of a different one too. We're, we're in the process of patching asphalt, uh, which there are a lot of spaces that desperately need batched. Uh, where we always kind of start with this process is we, we go to the worst first and then kind of work our way down the list. Uh, it's often a, a discussion of where do you start and stop when you patch. Uh, so there's some questions about wow, what the volume is going to be. Uh, we anticipate the volume exceeding the ten thousand dollar threshold. So we're coming to you uh for the fifteen thousand dollars approval. Dale felt like that would be a pretty safe amount. Um, you know, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna work on that. It's gonna be several smaller orders, but we felt like it was best to get it an approval for the full fifteen. Yeah, it's all gonna come from APAC. Uh, we don't really have a whole lot of options for asphalt around here. Uh, typically APAC runs, they sometimes run out of McPherson. Most of the time they've been running out of Abilene. Uh, we can go a little further out, but the further we go, the worse it is. Because every time you get an asphalt pole, you have your, the, the clock starts. So you gotta use that in a certain amount of time. Um, so what we were talking about with this, uh, we've got about thirty-five thousand dollars in street repairs in the regular operating budget. Today, we only spent about four. Uh, so the fifteen fits well within that amount. So what we are recommending today is to uh approve and purchase up to fifteen thousand. If we need additional funds, we'll come back to you. Uh, if we need to get, get more for that project. Uh, we hope to get this done. They've, they've already started um on some and we'll kind of continue that as we can work through the process.
Any questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to authorize the expenditure not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars for asphalt from APAC for the street department. Councilman by moves.
Second.
Councilman Lowen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will now move from city council into a land bank meeting. Um, and I will call the said land bank meeting to order. Um, we have approval of minutes and land bank vouchers. Uh, I guess that would kind of fall under consent.
Yeah.
Kind of a consent agenda.
And so you can take them one at a time if you'd like.
Uh, well, let's, let's do that. Let's, we've got approval of minutes. Everyone received copies of the minutes. Any questions or corrections regarding the minutes? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now have land bank vouchers totaling twenty-two thousand, five hundred and nine dollars, ninety-five cents, Mr. Styles.
Yeah. So what, what we've done here, um, we're actually reclassifying a lot of the expenditures that should be tied to the land bank. Uh, we had been, we had been categorizing those in our capital improvement fund, but they really weren't for things in the capital improvement. So what we're doing here is approving, moving that over into the land bank as an expense for both land bank. All the things there are, are related to land bank property. So there's maintenance, mowing. Uh, that's what some of those bigger qualifying expenses are. We can get you breakdown if you'd like to see that, but it's, it's mowing and some utility costs and something like that. Um, and then moving forward, we will be moving, having those in the correct spot. So this is just really a reclassification.
Any questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the land bank voucher reclassifications in the amount of twenty-two thousand, five hundred and nine dollars, ninety-five cents. Councilman by moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Drigger seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we will now consider a request from three oh six West Grand Avenue for donation to the land bank. And I believe we discussed this at our last meeting.
Yes, actually we did. Uh, we actually set a code enforcement hearing for this property at our last meeting, which would happen in November. Uh, the owner of that, Sydney Ballstead came in and offered, well, essentially said that she was done with the property uh and provided us the uh proper things to transfer that to the city land bank. Uh, and I told her, well, we, we, we don't necessarily want to take it. Uh, it's gonna have to be up to the land bank board to decide if whether or not we want to do that. Um, she gave Ben permission to go over and take an inspection, building, uh, building inspector. Uh, so here's, is, you know, kind of what we found. We've got the upstairs, obviously there's, there's a lot of things in there and there's been some graffiti. The, one of the issues was that the property wasn't secured. Uh, and so that's why you have some of that, some of those issues. Uh.
Was there people squatting in the property?
I think at one point there was. We've had some issues with utilities there too and had to cut that and there's been, there's been a lot going on with this property uh for a while.
There's a lot of kids that get in there. I live across the street from them. There are a lot of kids that, that get in there.
Yeah.
Do what they do.
Do whatever kids do, right? Um, and then, you know, that's one of the reasons why we came up with code enforcement actions to, we got to remedy that situation. Uh, we couldn't get anywhere with the landowner and just discussing it. So that's kind of where we went to. Um, you see, you know, the upstairs isn't, isn't awful with thirty, but it's not necessarily awful. Uh, the real issue is in the basement and there's a couple of pictures there. Uh, foundations walls are starting to collapse in. Uh, they've actually compromised the electrical panel in the basement. Um, Ben's estimation, this is probably just a demolition project. Um, so you know, this is, this is one of those things. It's a gift they just keep giving to you because if they give it to us, you know, we're, we're probably going to be obligated to, to demolish it. Uh, and based on our last demolition is about eight thousand, eighty-five hundred dollars, I think, to do the last demolition we did on Lincoln Street. Um, so there's pros and cons. You could, you could take it and we could demolish it and we'd have title to it. Um, we could continue with the code enforcement action, not take it into the land bank. Uh, we'll probably end up in a similar situation where we're, where we're uh demolishing the home. And then of course it'll go through the tax, we'll put it on taxes there, the tax rolls, the tax lien on it for the cost of demolition. Then we're going through the whole process of, is it gonna go through tax sale? How's that gonna work? Are we gonna get paid back? Um, I think ultimately it gets demolished either way. It's just a matter of if, if we were to, to put it on to the tax rolls, you know, there's, there's a chance that we can get paid back when somebody takes that in the future. But no, it's, it's really up to the, up to the, the land bank board if this is what you want to do or how you want to proceed. And I'd actually, JT, have any opinions on how either that would go or what either action would be?
Uh, so the choices that you, you can just take a donation to the land bank or you want to condemn it and demolish it and reinvent it private ownership.
Yep. Those are kind of the two options, I think.
Are there any?
I think they are delinquent this year, this, this point.
The unpaid property taxes are gonna be in front of anything you would recover on a lien. You may sell the property. So in addition to wondering whether or not once the property is sold, you get your lien paid off, you'd know that they'd have to pay the back taxes first if it goes to foreclosure sale. Um, I, I think it's a business decision, uh, not a, a legal decision. And I think in my view, depends how large of a problem you perceive it to be and how quickly you want it resolved. Uh, I can tell you that legally you will be able to resolve it much more quickly if you just take a donation of it. Uh, start demolishing it. Uh, a donation to the land bank should also wipe this claim, the slate, slate clean of any property taxes that are outstanding on the property. Uh, should eliminate the property taxes so that it needs to hold it free and clear with, without any lien. And then of course, it's yours, so you can demolish it. The, the city would have to pay to demolish it, correct? Yes. The city's gonna pay to demolish it. Either way, the question is at that point you will have, you'll have no hope of, 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 of getting what you spent back as opposed to a lien that's behind some taxes, which would give you some hope uh of getting it paid back. And I suppose you have to measure the hope of, of recouping any of that against the value of the raw dirt when you're done. Because if you take it into the land bank and you sell the raw dirt, you will get whatever you get for it. So if you can sell it for, you can sell the vacant lot for eight thousand dollars, you'll get all your money back. Uh, my perception, if you just ask me for my gut reaction on these, because we see them a lot. Um, is that you'll have a better chance, quite frankly, of recouping your costs by selling the vacant lot than you will uh putting a lien on the property and waiting three years for it to go to text. That, that would be my best guess, but that's not legal advice. That's a business. Uh, I, so I actually live across the street from this property and I can tell you right now, it's, it's dangerous. First of all, there's wild animals that are living in it. Um, something definitely needs to be done with it. So if the city's gonna have to end up paying for it either way, the sooner is probably the better. Especially if kids are getting it in and.
Yeah.
And a lot of.
And that's the whole point of the code enforcement actions that we've had, had, had that situation. So you know, we'd be taking that on with the anticipation of demolishing it. It would be a lot quicker to do it that way. Um, we would have the opportunity to sell it. I'm not sure if we could get eight thousand out of it. I, I would suspect not, but that's, you know, I guess we have to weigh out what the, what the, what the benefit of destroying the blight is versus, you know, the, the value to the community. So.
Or, or the surrounding homes. Reasonable. I mean, it, it does have utilities, right? So, so it's a buildable lot after you.
Yeah, it would be built.
It's a, it's a decent neighborhood.
Decent sized lot too for an interior city lot. So, I mean, you could build, you could build a house on it.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, it would have no specials probably anymore, right? So.
Yeah, be free for that.
Some builder might in fact find it a appropriate place for because they could sell it with no special assessments on their assistance.
I would suggest, you know, councilman by aside, uh, that uh we also owe it to, to other people in the neighborhood. I mean, you know, it's our job to enforce, you know, the, the, in remove light wherever we can. And uh, this, you know, I think JT's laid it out pretty succinctly. You know, it's either pay now or pay later. But uh, you know, we can, we can remove the blight in the end, uh, you know, have an opportunity to do something. And we've had people coming to us looking for existing lots to build potentially new homes on. So you know, that uh, that would definitely be a fit for that, I would think. So.
Do the outstanding taxes, we don't have to pay and they just, they don't have to pay?
Yeah, they kind of.
Well, yeah, in essence, they kind of disappear.
Okay.
That's one of the, one of the interesting features of the land bank.
Okay.
Any other questions? Comments?
So if we vote, do I need to refuse myself or abstain?
Do you have a financial obligation or? Okay.
Don't like seeing old dillows running out of the property. So.
It's exciting. You know, I used to see him all the time in Texas, but uh, you know, they're getting more and more up here. Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, and then I'd accept a motion to uh accept three oh six West Grand Avenue for donation to the land bank. That would be, and that's the action we will take.
Three oh six, yeah.
Three oh six. Three oh six, Grand. Somebody care to make that motion?
Make that motion.
Councilman Lowen moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Drigger seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So that concludes, I believe, our land bank meeting. So we will uh uh go back, move back into a city, our city council meeting and we are at item H. Discussion items, Mr. Styles. And I believe we'll hear a little bit from, from uh Mr. Klaus.
Sir, uh, so this is the legal publications on the city website. If you'll rewind your brains back to September of two thousand twenty-one. Uh, we uh adopted charter ordinance twenty-two, which would exempt us out from the provisions of uh KSA twelve dash one, six, five, one, which is the uh statute with regard to legal publications. Uh, we provided a substitution provision, which is what you do and when you do the charter ordinance, uh, which would allow the city to designate its official legal publication uh spot as the city's website, provided that it met some of the uh qualifications for that, that it was free, it's public face and easily accessible from the city's homepage. So uh, we went through that process. Uh, anytime you do charter ordinance, there's a sixty day period for a public to review and also to uh submit a protest petition if they would like to do so. Uh, it's published twice in its entirety in the, in the uh paper, official newspaper. Uh, opportunity for that citizen petition, uh, if they were going to do that, there would be uh ten percent of the electors that voted in the last election at the time, that would have been a hundred and thirteen signatures that would have been required. Uh, we received no, no petition filed or circulated to our knowledge. We honestly don't call receiving any comments. There's no comments in the record either. So uh, from that time, um, so the charter ordinance uh took effect in November of two thousand twenty-one and we didn't take any official action at that time. Um, what we would need to do to make that action would be to adopt a resolution. Determining where we would, what, putting the city's website as the official publication at place. Uh, so you fast forward back to this year, July twenty-sixth, attached attorney general's opinion on there for you. It's twenty-three dash five. Uh, the attorney general affirmed the opinion of Triple Wolf and Garrettson about that. Uh, what we thought was that it would be acceptable for second and third class cities to charter out of those requirements and designate their website. Uh, so the remaining item here i- in the statute is uh, well, the remaining items too, if we were to choose to do that, would be to uh adopt that resolution, which the attorney general now sees as something that would be acceptable. Uh, that's obviously the top attorney in the state. It's not the court of law. So um, that there's something to be considered there. Uh, just kind of revisiting some of the reasons why we wanted to, would consider doing that. Uh, the free public and city websites are free publication, access by anybody on the internet connection. Um, it's widely broadband is widely available in the city. Uh, we're one of the places in town. Obviously we've got fiber to premise. Uh, we've got lots of available free public hotspots. The library is an opportunity for people to come in, receive help in order to get, in order to get those. Um, our, our residents are people who regularly interact with us on our online presence right now. We've got eight hundred and thirty-three come up customers. Use our front desk utility accounts to pay their bills. Uh, we've got rec desk, which uh Jerry's programming runs through. We have uh twenty-six hundred unique uh, unique registrations on that and reunite users. So they're pretty familiar with that. We've got a city's uh Facebook page, which has got thirty-two hundred followers. Our website, our new website that we put up, we don't have the analytics for that. There was some issue with the backend on how the analytics look on that. But our previous website had about fifteen hundred hits a month. Um, give or take, again, good month. So, you know, you can kind of take in that. I, I think we've got a pretty good presence on the web. That's pretty, pretty well out there. Uh, we've also been, in addition to standing up the new website, we've also added uh a program to it called Audio I, which brings us up to ADA compliance with that. There's been a lot of things going around in, in different states, particularly Florida, where people have been suing uh local governments for not meeting ADA requirements uh on their website. So uh, we, we've opted to do that and that'll be in place in October first. Um, one of the other reasons why we do this is uh publishing notices in a more timely manner. We have the ability to publish those ourselves. Uh, you know, the, the records, you got a Tuesday midday deadline. And so if, you know, if we've got urgent matters, then you know, we have to wait if we publish something or adopt something, we have to wait till the next week in order to um, to see that published and take effect. So uh, I would say they've been accommodating with this. They did put a, a notice in for me. I missed the deadline and, and put it, submitted something in July fourth and they were able to, to put that in for that uh, for that following fifth paper. So they have done that. Uh, they have also offered to, to, if something was important, uh, to put it in. Now, after our meeting, we've never, we've never really tested that because it's hard to kind of define what's important. I think all of our actions are important, but that's, that's kind of a debatable question. Um, so yeah, with that, that's kind of the, those are kind of the two main things with that. Um, previously, when we had this discussion, we brought up the availability of the internet and I've kind of got some statistics there. Um, let's say that, you know, we've got free copies of, you know, anybody comes into the city, you can get a free copy of what it is in addition to what they find on the internet. Uh, what we publish now is a, is a summary publication. So uh, what that does is basically give a, a general summary of what is in that ordinance, but then directs them to the city website to find the actual copy of the ordinance. So now it's, it's, that's kind of what's getting published right now. Uh, we did have a question after our last discussion about why we can't use the free press. Uh, the free press doesn't meet statutory requirements for paper. Uh, it doesn't have a paid subscription and for general circulation. So that's one of the reasons, that's the primary reason. I mean, it does get delivered to nearly every residence in town unless people opt out to get, get a, a copy of it. So that would make sense. Uh, it's widely available. It's free. Um, but it doesn't, doesn't meet the legal definitions for that. So. Um, just kind of talking about the process that we would use. Uh, we've got an affidavit process that, uh, Triplet Wolf Garrettson's put together for us. Uh, I think a lot of other communities that they represent use this process. You know, Andover does. Um, the city of McPherson also has done this. They've been doing it since two thousand twenty. Um, so it's one of those things that there, there's, they're kind of a, that's specific process. Multiple people, uh, can have access to put these things up. You know, it's all, it's all gonna be put in there and during doing that process. Um, I would also note that the official copy, uh, the official records of the city are retained by the city. So, you know, whatever is considered the official record is already retained as a city document. We've got all those documents dated back to the formation of the city. Um, so if you want to look at minutes from the eighteen hundreds, come on down. Got those. We'll let you look at those for free. Um, so one of the fi- the fiscal impacts, you know, we talked about that back in two thousand twenty-one. At that time it was about five thousand dollars. Um, twenty-two. Well, in twenty-one, we ended up spending it seven thousand three hundred twenty-two. We paid, uh, a little over nine thousand. To date, we're on track. We're at seven thousand seven hundred. So obviously the cost has gone up fairly significantly since we've had the first discussion on this. Uh, obviously we would see that savings, um, in there if, if we were to make that move. Um, the annual cost of the websites are already kind of sunk costs. We're gonna be doing that regardless. So, is what it is. Uh, so this is, this is the discussion item. That's kind of the gist of it. That's kind of what we've talked about in the past and kind of where it's at. I would defer to, to JT to add or talk about the legal background for that.
Well, I, I think you've done a great job. I, the only thing I'd have to do would be to add a little color commentary and that is, in twenty twenty-one, the Kansas League of Municipalities had a conference. And, uh, in a presentation there, they opined that, uh, KSA twelve sixteen fifty-one was not uniform because it only applies to second and third class cities, and that meant that a city could charter out from under it. Logical question from that would be, what, what that, all that says is how you designate an official newspaper. Now, there's a number of other laws that tell you when you need to publish. Some of those laws, and, and this gets confused because it really doesn't have anything to do with public notices, which I think is the times people get confused about. Some of those laws say that you have to publish in the official city newspaper, which then requires you to go back and look at the statute and say, okay, what is that? Some of those laws say you must publish it in newspaper of general circulation within the county. I bring that up because this wouldn't change any of those laws. For instance, your budget needs to be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the county. Actually presents a little risk for staff because now they have to be careful and know what the statute says. Uh, this isn't a panacea. It wouldn't mean you could just put everything on your website. Whenever the law says you have to publish in a newspaper of general circulation, doesn't use the magic words official city newspaper. And you'd have to publish in a newspaper of general circulation. When the league first suggested this, uh, I'm just gonna tell you that a lot of small town Kansas, um, I, I think probably the first ones to jump into the pool were people who had a beef with their newspaper, didn't appreciate the coverage they had gotten or whatever the case may be. Uh, most were just concerned about the publication expenses, you know, always trying to spread the dollars farther and put them back into the community. Um, we took a pretty conservative approach when we got called. And, um, I just want you to know that, that the basis for that approach was, uh, supported by law too, which is it does say official city newspaper and a website is not made of paper. And, and there's a general law in Kansas that basically says in interpreting a statute, you give it its common meaning and the words have the common meaning. And, and I think that newspaper doesn't mean website. That being said, um, this statute, which defines what an official newspaper was clearly not uniform. And under the constitution of the state of Kansas, a city can charter out from under it. That was always our. When that happened, a lots of cities adopted a charter ordinance to charter out from under that law and to make their website their official city newspaper. We thought that would be a mistake, uh, for two reasons. One, if they were all wrong and it, it, it weren't able to do that, then they would have basically, uh, taken an illegal act and they'd be publishing on their website and everyone they did would not be having any effect, legal effect. Um, we called the attorney general's office because we're very involved in municipal laws, you can imagine, and they didn't know this was going on and, um, it didn't sound like a very good idea to them. Of course, they're not the league who's supporting cities. Uh, and ultimately they said, well, we just don't have an opinion on that. So that was really frustrating for us because in our role as bond counsel, we render a legal opinion, uh, kind of a guarantee that your bonds are legally valid they issued, which meant that we couldn't do what some of these other cities were doing and then give an opinion on it. So what we did instead for a number of our cities is we adopted the charter ordinance you did, which said, we're changing the law. The official city newspaper can either be, and then we, we parroted exactly what the statute said. We added, or it can be a public facing website, blah, blah, blah. So we hadn't changed it. Just change the law, which would allow you to change it in the future by simple resolution. Then, uh, we encouraged the council, and you may remember, you authorized and requested your city attorney, uh, Kimberlin to request an attorney general's opinion on the topic, which they hated. But, uh, we, we did submit a request for an official attorney general's opinion. If we didn't hear anything, not, not only within sixty days, this is supposed to happen, but really even six months later. So finally I called the AG's office and I said, you know, are you just, just not working anymore? Cause we're, we've requested this opinion and you're not, you're not even responding to the letter and you can't do that. You're the attorney general and. This was in the course of an election year and the attorney general was running for governor. I don't know if that's pertinent, but of course you've got the Kansas Press Association on one side and the League of Kansas Municipalities on the other. And while it's just a legal question, it, it has an effect. They wrote us back, a letter that said, thank you for your question. We're not legally obligated to answer questions from cities. So we're not gonna answer your question. And, um, so I actually called the mayor and I said, you know, the statute does say that city attorneys can ask questions and that they can answer them. But there's another statute that says that the legislature asks a question, they shall answer them. And so, um, the city was able to contact representative Owen. Am I right? And, um, he basically took our letter and, and we replaced it on his letterhead and he sent the request in. This is about a year and a half later. During this time period, you're publishing everything in the newspaper. Excuse me. You're publishing summaries in the newspaper. A different city I represent said, JT, we're not gonna be that cautious. We don't care. We're going with the website and they did that for everything but bonds. This is the last important thing. That's because when I called the attorney general's office and asked him what their official position was, if I sent them a bond transcript that had only been published on the website, their response to me verbally was, don't do that. And I said, well, what does that mean? Just don't send me one where you didn't publish any paper, paper, just don't do it. And so we interpreted that to mean that we were, you were still okay. Because if your ordinance was completely illegal, it was no problem. You were still publishing in the newspaper and that was an option you had. If it was legal, that was no problem. You were still publishing in the newspaper and, and so you were, you were kind of okay either way. Then, um, we didn't, the legislator didn't receive a response either. But then, um, a different city I represent, uh, I did send in a transcript. They had the exact same ordinance you had. And, um, they had only published on the website because, and I hate to say this, but it happens all the time. We sent it to the newspaper. It was delivered to the newspaper on time and the newspaper just forgot to put it in the paper. They didn't publish it. So we had a, we had a four million dollar issue and, and AG called and said, this isn't published in the newspaper or the whole up for like trying. I'm, I'm, I said, but the good news is, I said, uh, it's okay because it doesn't close for another week. It's gonna be in the paper before closing. It's gonna be fine. Attorney general said. Then, he sent me an email that said, just to be clear, we did not issue an opinion regarding whether publication on a city's website complies with publication under the statutes. For instance, we want you to think about that in a star bond project. It says that the area be described and published in the city's official newspaper and if the city has a website on the first page of the website. His point being seems like when they want you to be able to use a website, they use the term website. He went, I want to say, given the rules of statutory construction, it appears a city may have more than one official city newspaper. Hey JT, have you reviewed and have a legal opinion whether designating a newspaper and the city's website is possibility? But I called him back up and said, actually I've given that great thought over the years and the problem with designating them both is then you would have to do both. Meaning you'd have to have it on your website and you'd still have to have it in the newspaper. And for me, that is no advantage to anyone. Because there is a s- statute that says when the word and is used, you must do both. And so I didn't know why they asked me that question and it's still unclear why they asked me that question. But then they called me back the next day and said, hey, could you get one of your clients to write us a request for an attorney general's opinion on this? We're, we're, we would like, uh, a request. And I said, why? Did, did somebody give you a transcript that doesn't meet the requirement? And they said, well, we, we can't talk about that, but we'd really appreciate a request. And my big hangup throughout the process has been, this may surprise you, but I keep compete with other lawyers in this state for bond work. And I've always told the attorney general, I don't care what the rules are as long as they're the same for everyone. And so they called and said, we would like you JT to work up another request for an attorney general's opinion. And I said, well, I don't have to. This was on the twenty-fifth of July. I said, you haven't answered the last one that representative Owen rubbed you. It's floating around up there somewhere and you haven't answered it. And they said, really? And I said, yeah. So they hub the phone and on July twenty-sixth, we received an attorney general's opinion answering Mr. Owen's question that says you may charter out from under the statute and name your website as the official city newspaper. For me, this is curative of our conservative approach to this. I mean, honestly, while there is still a chance a co- court could rule to the contrary, um, they couldn't find now that you've had a bad faith or they had done something wrong because we asked the chief lawyer of the state of Kansas what he thought. And to his credit, he issued the, the new attorney general issued an opinion so that we have an answer and it says you can, you can do this. So I think we've positioned you perfectly if you want to. You've got a ordinance that's been passed, approved, published twice in the official city newspaper. And, uh, you didn't have a protest, so it is in law and it is enforced. And it just simply says, but you designate the official city newspaper by resolution, just like the other law says. And it says it can be a newspaper of general circulation with paid circulation or it can be your website. And, um, that's, that's, that's where we are. Um, I'm, for whatever reason, I'm feeling kind of been pretty involved in this issue. Um, statewide. Uh, in fact, the league at its last meeting said, yes, this is totally okay and you can do it. Cause somebody asked him and, and they said, but we understand some bond counselors still having a problem with it. Which, which was not the case. I always thought they were right. I just, I represent clients who don't normally want to take extravagant risks. And I didn't want you all to be in a position of having somebody challenging their speeding ticket. Because the STO you adopted was not validly published in the local newspaper. Therefore they didn't and couldn't be held responsible for a speeding ticket or a DUI or a dog running at large or shooting a bow and arrow within the city limits, all those things that are contained in a, in a UPOC and an STO. So, that's the, that, that's kind of the, the extra um, of how we got here. I believe whatever you decide, you're in a pretty, uh, safe place um, in most of the cities that have done this, there's been some uh, uncomfortableness, uh, with the local newspaper, not wanting you to change. Um, I, I believe that can be both fiscal and, and just sort of acknowledgement of the fact that since nineteen eighty-five in the United States, twenty-five hundred hometown newspapers have gone out of business. They had. So I'd be delighted to answer any questions you have about this. And if I've told you more than you want to know, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's that. My, my question is simply how much manpower is this gonna take to put this in the on the website?
Yeah.
Who's gonna be doing all of that?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've, uh, we're, we're planning on doing it anyway.
Hmm.
Okay, to parallel. Um, if, if he chose to continue doing the publications and the paperwork.
We'd still.
We're still gonna be doing it.
He'll be doing it.
Cause all, all the ordinances do go up anyway. Um, cause they are, the summaries do point back to the website and so those are up there. Um, so it's, it's part of kind of our process already. The extra step would be that we you know, put it under the legals notification and button, uh, there and it's time and date stamped. And, uh, I think it should, you know, meet, meet all the criteria.
And you're there.
Yeah, it's not terribly difficult to do. Uh, myself can, I can do it. Danielle can do it. Karen's trained to do it. Uh, we've got multiple people who can do it. Um, you know, the question, so I guess the, the question is, you know, legally we have the ability to it. The question is, should we do it? You know, and there's, you know, obviously some, there's opinions. I know Mr. Myers sent, sent a letter to the council.
Did everyone receive a copy of this?
Yeah.
This one? Yes.
We've been asked to put that into the public record and he said, we would do that.
Yeah, I, I asked Matt and Danielle to get that up on our website as well. So the public, so that it's public facing and the, and the public can see it. Because I think anything along these lines needs to be done very deliberately and, and with, you know, extreme care in terms of making sure that people know and what we're doing and why we're doing it. You had, uh, you had a a comment about in your, in your summary, Matt, about, uh, an affidavit of publication.
Right.
And, you know, is is that something we normally have, have an issue getting from the, from the paper?
Uh, we have, we have had that recently. Uh, we've got a kind of a backlog right now and I don't know what the, we've got a full list of things that we are, we're looking for. We've got some, I think back from, what was the earliest one? Was it May? Yeah, early June. So, uh, what, what normally happens with those is we, we send them in. Uh, they send us a proof and there's an invoice attached to that. We've, we've got an agreement with them that we pay from a statement, um, because we do, we do a lot of business there. Um, and we haven't received statements, um, from them for a while, I guess, is since then. And so we've got several a fairly lengthy list of affidavits we have yet to receive uh, from publication. So, yeah, that, that has been an issue lately. And some of those things, I mean, some of those things we need, we need the budget one, for example, that has to go in budget when we prove it.
And what if we don't get it?
Uh, that's, that is the bridge we'll have to cross when we get there. What we do, what we have done, at least with the budgets, uh, currently, uh, we've taken clippings from the paper and, and sent that in with our budget. Obviously Tina can't accept that. Uh, you know, we, we know that it's been published. Uh, but we have to have the affidavit. So.
So from a timeliness standpoint, again.
I want to say too, you've had a substantial problem on your tax exempt fees purchase that you did for your, and, um, we were unable to get the affidavit, um, and the bank ultimately was rightly, I think irritated that we couldn't close on the transaction because we couldn't get the simple affidavit that showed it had been published. This placed your bond counsel in a horrific position because again, I'm the ultimate guarantor that that was legal valid and bindingly issued. And, and for that, it's quite clear we're supposed to have an affidavit. Ultimately, we had you send us a copy of the newspaper and we opined over it. But it's not something I desire to do again, or something that we will likely do again. We need an affidavit that says this was published, uh, in the newspaper. We'll occasionally get through the attorney general's preliminary approval prop- properly with a tear sheet. What you described, the, the page out of the. But, um, But um, but they will not, we, we will not be able to get uh. Bonds approved in the future if, if this happened. I mean, you would be. You would be stuck and you would have sold the bonds and promised that you'd deliver them and have a bond purchaser. Who is entitled to the benefit of those bonds and that borrowing and we would be unable to close. Because we, we, if this had been a bond issue instead of a lease purchase, which it could have been. We'll be in a real pickle. I just wanted to address that to the mayor.
Well, one of the things I heard you say there too is you had to spend time, therefore you had to charge for your services for that.
Well, I mean. Fortunately. We do those things on a fixed rate, so. Over the years, we've made a lot more friends with cities by telling them what it's going to cost before they do it than telling them what it's going to cost afterwards. So in that. In that particular circumstance, no, I mean, we just, we just took the loss and we have issues like that all the time. It. Uh, it did not cost the city money, but to your point, it easily could have. Again. Again, if it had been a bond issue and you couldn't deliver it, I've been in circumstances where that happens. The bond purchaser brings a lawsuit. The underwriter brings a lawsuit. Everybody brings a lawsuit because the bonds weren't delivered, even though the. Purchase agreement was signed, so it's a, it's a messy circumstance. I, I do have one more thing to add. If, if you do go this route, uh your next meeting, whenever. I think it's helpful in the cities that have done this. They pick a date they're going to publish on the website on. I think it's very important that you do that. Um, and, and staff can decide how big a headache they want to make for themselves. It, it can always be the next day if they want that. I, I don't. Recommend that. I recommend, you know, you're used to waiting for an ordinance to take effect until it's published in the newspaper. So I recommend picking a day or two later. This allows us to put on the. Top of the ordinance, the legal requirement of when it will be published in the official city newspaper and fill it in in advance and then it gives. The people who are responsible, the task of knowing whether it's. Uh, Friday or Monday or whenever you decide. That, that's the day we got to get them all up. And you, and you just have somebody who's, who knows if there are any ordinances, they need to go up that day. Uh, that doesn't mean that if you had one that was an emergency that you wanted to take effect the next day, you couldn't give special instructions. And say, hey, Matt, we want this one on there tomorrow and we need to fix it to read that way. But I, I do recommend that staff pick a day, cause it's, it's not always easy. You could have a computer glitch the next day or, or you know, um, I, I recommend you give yourself a day or two. That is always your publication date so that the world knows. When it's going to take effect and it also helps the. The constituents know when to look for stuff. If they want, if they want to look for what the laws are changing and what the notices and ordinances are, they know what day they go up.
Now, just to add to that, we have a notification feature on the website so they can subscribe to it. If something was to be added to that, they'd get a notification, be emailed if they were subscribed to that.
And I do think it's important. I'm going to talk to some of my other cities. Uh, I've represented people who've been sued over AAA compliance on their website. That's just not, that's not just California issues. So I think. I think having that work for the, it's crazy, but for the hearing and the. Uh, pair it is, is important.
Are there any other questions? Um, you mentioned some, uh, some statistics regarding our website and number of hits we've gotten, et cetera. Do we, do we know or have we ever been informed by the, by the record, what their actual circulation within the city limits of Hillsborough is?
I know that. Uh, we would be able to access, it's public record to know what their subscription is. Uh, for the, for their total subscription and circulation, but I, I don't know what that is for City Hillsborough.
And you know, it's not to say we necessarily know who's, that everybody that, that hits on our website is from the city of Hillsborough either.
Well, true. Yeah, that's fair.
So and, and you know, just to be fair about it, but, but again, I think, you know, the. Couple of things in, in my mind, one is, is uh. Uh JT referred to kind of the, to move to, to, to technology, you know, and in more of an online. Presence and I think we see that both at the state government and the federal government level as well. Uh, but uh, there's also an idea of cost and, and you know, I think about. You know, that uh, you know, that uh, it has to be a subscribed newspaper, you know, the, the way that the law read, which. You know, implies a cost to access the information. At some, it's, it's at some level as opposed to, you know, there's no additional cost to anybody to go on our website. You know, but again, there's, there's a, you know, there's. The people that do read the paper, you know, just to be fair, are probably people. My age and, and maybe older, you know, that, that generation, you know, us, us uh boomers that, that are. You know, phasing out here, so. And I think we need to, I think, again, we need to be very deliberate about this. We need to think it through. We need to consider everybody's opinions and then certainly Mr. Myers has very succinctly laid out his opinions in his letter. And I think they, they uh, they, they have weight and we need to uh, consider that as well. But at the end of the day, our job is to be responsible to the citizens of Hillsborough, Kansas. That's what we were elected to do and, and uh, you know, sometimes those decisions in that process aren't easy ones, but. We still have to make them. So is there any other comments or questions regarding this matter?
I would, well, just to clarify, when I said the statistics about our, our website, it's on our previous website. I don't have the information for our current website. And that was something that was given to me. That information is the main one started from Larry, so. That is, there's where that information came from.
All right. So we are now to uh the point in uh, in uh our agenda where we're at. The city administrators report, so Mr. Styles, I'm going to ask you to carry on, sir.
Yes, sir. Uh, AMPI buildings is kind of a, one of our fun projects. Um, we talked to the Brownfield program here in the state uh to do an environmental for our fire station project, which is on the AMPI property. They decided that, well, after we discussed it with them, they decided they would do an environmental on the entire property and not just the specific site. Cause it is still all one adjoined property. Um, and so they went into the phase one environmental for us on the AMPI building and they've come back and say, hey, we need to do a phase two. Uh, which will include, I think, I think he said fifteen different sites that they want to test. Uh, that's for contaminants, that's for asbestos, lead-based paint, those type of things, uh airborne pollution. Um, so they are in the process of, of completing a phase two study, which costs about forty-five thousand bucks um for this one. Uh, it's no cost to us. It's just run through the state Brownfields program. Uh, one of the cool things with that is that uh with that information gathered, we may be able to apply for an EPA cleanup loan on that property. Which could give us up to fifteen or five hundred thousand uh for remediation demolition of that property, which would be great. Uh, I spoke with Rancin Financial at a meeting we've done this morning about that and they were interested in helping if that's something we wanted to pursue in the future. Um, but last estimate we had is about six hundred and forty thousand to talk, to knock that thing down and remediate it. So I think we'd be kind of in that ballpark and we'll, if, if it fits, we're going to apply for it, I think, or pursue it.
Well, I would love to see uh, as, as we're raised, as we are raising up our new uh. Uh, fire station that we are, you know, ra- raising that old building. Because uh, there's nothing that grinds me more than getting a request for a roof repair for. Fifteen thousand dollars or whatever it is and uh, you know.
What, what's gonna happen to the lease then?
Well, yeah, the, we, the, the plan that we had talked about originally was not to, to destroy there or demolish, destroy. Demolish the entire facility. There's still some parts of it that are, are structurally okay and intact. In fact, they had. As they built onto that, a lot of the walls we were talking about are exterior walls and they've kind of cobbled together in the center. So really this was just what we were talking about when we talked about demolishing it is taking out the center and back sections. Um, so you would still have the uh, where the fire bay, the apparatus are now, that would still be there where we did that roof repair. Uh, the um.
With the welding.
Welding school is, is still structurally pretty good and the police department is still in decent shape. Um, so really you're just talking about kind of taking out the center section there. You could take the whole thing down with them. We wouldn't have a home for a police department, so it would have. Uh, yeah, you know, I think that building still has some, some merit, can still be used for something. Uh, and then you know, the flip side, and then the other building that we've rent out uh for Ospas and the dairy, that, that building would stay put too, so. Yeah, so it's a potential there. Let's see how it goes. We're, we're, we're on it. We're looking at it. Um, so it's really an interesting, interesting possibility. Uh, handed out a United Way survey. Um, United Way of Harvey County is collecting information on Marion County Health Education and Financial Stability, so. Uh, they're asking not just us, but several leaders in the county to fill out that information. I think they would like to extend their services from Harvey into Marion County. Uh, United Way does a lot of great things. A lot, they have a lot of cool programs, worked pretty extensively with the Great Plains, United Way out of Wichita and the one in. Hutchinson, we work in that area, so. Um, good agency. If you would uh take the time to maybe take a look at that, fill it out, send it back to me and I'll, I'll collect it and take them into the United Way there. I've got this online already and build it out.
Okay, perfect.
That's good. That's good then. You don't need to worry about filling a second one out. But if, if you, if you want to take it, yeah, it does take a minute to, to do it if you're wanting to be thoughtful about it, so. Uh, Flint Hills Regional Council, I attended a meeting with that. That's where I kind of learned about the Brownfields program and tab. The uh KSU TAB program, uh excellent workshop. It really was. It was. Um, kind of lightly attended and we're, we're not actually technically in the Flint Hills region, um according to how they split that up, we're adjacent to. Uh, we're actually in Sked's region. You may have heard Sked before, South Central Kansas Economic Development District. They do mostly kind of loan activity and grant writing. Uh, Flint Hills is more. They're more focused on regional planning and kind of doing some uh planning activities within their, their, their communities, uh. Their cities there, so might be an opportunity that we could collaborate with them. We're going to have a couple more conversations with that. If anything comes out of that, we'll bring it, you know, obviously it'll come to the council. Want to just make you aware, we're having that conversation. Uh, job fair with core communities. I think we've got it nailed down. We did one in February. Uh, it was pretty successful. I think it was well attended. Uh, had a lot of employers there, maybe not as many employees or job seekers as we would like. Uh, but we're going to give it another try. So I talked to Tracy from Core Communities and. We're targeting October twenty eighth, which is a Saturday in the morning, um hoping that maybe there's more people. Available on a Saturday morning. Um, so we're kind of putting that together now. We're going to get that nailed down with the fair board. They're. Supposed to give me an idea of that's going to be available. They didn't think it'd be a problem, but. Uh, once we get that all nailed down and put together, we'll have some advertisements and stuff going out and Tracy's going to go talk to. Companies to, to be, be part of that, so. Uh, I think that's a good thing. We should do as many of those as we possibly can uh with our labor issues in the county. Uh, KBP Electric Bill, you got that, two hundred and seven thousand, uh which is, we got a nice energy cost adjustment this month again, which is great. Um, and just to, and the winter surcharge went off this month too, so that, that doesn't appear on there as well. Uh, just to give you a kind of comparison, but last year, at the same year, at the same month, it was three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Um, and the new city wasn't all that much different. Um, so it was just a different. Things are, things are looking up on the electric world, I guess, is what I'd say. Uh, health insurance savings reports uh this year or this month, we saved twenty-seven hundred, a little over twenty-seven hundred dollars compared to our four fund plan. Uh, it's actually down from where we kind of normally, we actually had a really high month for claims um in August. What high month is relative? High month for us. You know, they, it kind of come and go, um but we're, we're still on target. We've saved ten thousand for the plan year. And reserve balance is over a hundred. And then the final thing I had today was to announce that we've got a new member of the Hillsborough. Family, uh Bryson J. Edgar was born to Tyler and Lucy Edgar. Uh, Tyler Works Force and Golf Department, they were born yesterday, so welcome Bryson to the community. Always good to have a new team member.
Okay, any questions for Matt? Hearing none, uh we will uh move to our final public comment opportunity. And again, I see no additions online nor in the room. So we will dispense with that and go to council comments, councilman bye.
Uh, I've had a great time at the craft fair Saturday. There was a lot of people. Um, a lot of great food and great vendors and we were glad to welcome to Hillsborough, so. Uh, my friend came in from out of town and he was just blown away by the hospitality at Hillsborough, so. Um, yeah, it was a blast. That's all I got.
That's Malone.
They'll call it.
Okay. Councilman Driggers. I will say that uh I had an opportunity to, to uh help greet vendors uh early, early Saturday morning, I think. Started a little before six and, and uh, and uh got people, uh got people settled in. But uh, we uh, I was told that we had fifty more booths this year than we did last year, so. That was, that was good growth and uh, and so I was excited about that and, and uh, love to continue to see that. Go and grow, so uh, that's always a showcase for Hillsboroughs. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.